The meeting will now come to order. We are now holding the September meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. We have with us tonight Everton students who are going to be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'll just turn this over to Mr. Jennings and do whatever you would like to share with us.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Glad to be here tonight to talk a little bit about Everton. First of all, I'd like to share with you our mission. Everton Elementary School with the support of a community that values education effectively utilizes all resources to ensure a safe, harmonious atmosphere where all students learn essential skills, are challenged to reach their potential, and are motivated to become creative, lifelong learners, and healthy, responsible citizens. One of those essential skills is writing. And Mrs. Reese has been working with her students with some writing, and I'm going to have her share a little bit of that with you.
In fourth grade, we start with personal narratives, so a story about themselves or something that's happened with them. One part of personal narratives that we've worked really hard on is a good beginning, getting your reader hooked on your story so they want to hear the rest of it or want to read the rest of it. Each of them have a good hook that they want to share with you. Some possibilities that we've discussed are a good description, a question, an exclamation, so see if you can listen for their good hook and see if you want to listen to the rest of their story.
My name is Cheryl Garrison and I'm writing about Christmas. It is my favorite holiday, Christmas. My little brother comes to wake me up. I get out of bed, I see the tree, the lights sparkle like diamonds.
My name is Olivia Richardson and I wrote about riding horses with my dad. It started out as a lazy and not-so-exciting day, on Sunday, August 25th, 2013. I asked my dad if we could go over to my neighbor's house with our horses and ride his trails. Finally, he said yes. I was so excited.
My name is Morgan Kieferbert and I'm writing about my tonsils being taken out. Why is it taking so long to get to the hospital? It's been like an hour. We waited one hour before the nurse took me back from my surgery.
My name is Madeline Newman and I'm going to share my hook about my family trip. Wow, I can't wait to tell you about my awesome family trip. One day, I went to this theater called Tumsa. It was really cool, but loud. Guess what? They use actual horses.
My name is Skylar Cabbins and I am writing about Florida. I wonder how Florida was so fun. I was so excited. We just got on the plane. I was in my seat writing what I did on the last day of school.
Thank you. If you want to know more, you'll have to come visit.
Thank you, students. Just a few more little things to share with you this evening. I'll have Dr. Bear hand these around. First of all, I want to highlight our volunteers at Everton. There are several volunteers that come in on a weekly basis to help our students. These volunteers are made up of retired teachers, community members, parents and grandparents, and even a board member. Volunteers read with students, practice basic math facts, and assist teachers with tasks such as putting together learning centers. Our theme for this year is "Take a Journey with Reading." The staff chooses a book to be read during each month of the school year. Each student, parent, and staff member is encouraged to read the book. This month, we are looking at the book because of Winn-Dixie. And I want to let you know that Everton has been adopted. We have joined the Boy Scouts of America in the Adopt a School program. Troop 31, which is comprised of several current and former Everton students, work with service projects throughout the school year, around the school. During Everton's open house, for example, troop members served ice cream and even helped with cleanup, so we're really glad to have that extra help and support. What was handed around to you is a little bit of the data. I shared some of this with you last year, and at the time last year, we only had one example of the Acuity Predictive A for the 2012-2013 school year. As you look through, you can see how Acuity has predicted we will do on iStep. Of course, we don't have total school data that we can share with you at this time, but I hope those smiley faces let you know that it looks promising. This is what we have tonight. Are there any questions or anything I may answer? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And thank you, students, for sharing your stories. They were very, very well done. Thank you for being here. And Ms. Reese, thank you for being here also.
Thank you, Pat.
At this time, if you would like to exit, you feel free to do so. You're welcome to stay if you would like to do that, so. Well, hang on until Dr. Hodges comes back into the room for just a second. No sooner said than done.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any patron comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, I move on. Excuse me. For our consent agenda, we have approval of amendments from the regular business meeting of 8/1313, the personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera, the approval of the August 2013 claims number 32701, 2, number 32977, approval of the facility usage for the Connersville Gymnastics Center, approval of St. Gabriel's Food Service Agreement, acceptance of a donation from Contract Industrial Tooling for WTCC, approval of donation from Duke Energy Foundation for CHS Robotics, which is Project Lead The Way, and then you have, board in front of you, a letter here, and Dr. Hodges, if you want to speak to that, would be...
It's a preapproval, so we can pre-write a check for this event. It'll happen before our next board meeting, and so we just need your approval so we can take care of it. Is that accurate?
That's correct. They'd like a check to pay for the lodging.
Normally, we've got that ahead of you and put that in your claim document, but we weren't able to get that accomplished.
Mr. President, I move to approve the claim for housing.
Okay. Can we include that in the consent agenda along with the other, or do you want to do that as a separate thing?
No, that's fine.
To include it with the others? Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The motion carries. Now we move into the action items, our personnel report. Dr. Veier.
Thank you, Mr. Virchitt. Dr. Hodges, members of the board, several persons for your consideration this evening. First off, under Certified Staff Militia, Bennett on a temporary contract at Grandview, effective August 26th to the end of the 2013-2014 school year. Also on a temporary contract with Janet Day at Grandview also, effective October 7th, 2013, to the end of the school year. Sarah Franklin, as a business teacher at CHS, effective August 29. Linda Rosenberg, who's not a regular teacher but is a certified person, we hired her as a consultant under a contract, as she now owns her own company, and would be providing services for early college, high school. If you receive some background information from me on that, I think it's pretty self-explanatory to entertain any questions you might have on that. Support staff, Christina Frame is a preschool teacher at Magic Moments. Extra curricular, Susan Brown, a drama coach, CHS. Chris Dirks, varsity girls tennis, CHS. Jessica Neede is a JV volleyball coach at CHS, and Teresa Sebert, assistant drama coach, CHS. And finally, contract adjustment, Mr. Navi's contract reduced 10 days, and the purpose of that was to provide opportunities based and through our negotiations to develop and create a lead agricultural FFA advisor and a support person for stipend usage for the 2013-2014 school year. Those items for your consideration this evening, Mr. Virchitt.
You've heard the personnel report. Do I hear a motion to accept the personnel report?
I have a question on Gabe Navi's reduction of times. Is he going to give up part of his responsibilities of FFA or...
He will. They'll divide that responsibility even more evenly, I think, and Michelle will be able to pick up some more of those responsibilities, and that way you get paid for those efforts. And so he's willingly decided to do that, so he will provide that.
But he still will be involved?
He will be very much involved. He will probably be considered the lead person, so Michelle will be on support at this stage since she's beginning her first year, but Mr. Navi would take the lead on that.
I'm going to approve the personnel report.
All right. The motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the approval of the policy council bylaws, the approval of the Head Start Integrated Service Plans, approval of the Head Start Priority Guidelines, and Head Start Orientation. Dr. Riki, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Virchitt, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. Lori Boggs is the best one to give you the details about the policy with the Head Start Program. It's useful to do so.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the governing board orientation. That's something, again, that's a federal guideline we have to do every year. I said, a lot of you have heard it several times. I feel like I'll have maybe said it to music, but I'm not a singer or a dancer. I'll go there, maybe a puppet show the next time or something, I don't know. But just to explain to the board, and especially with Mr. Hunt being new, just Head Start is a federal program. It was started in the '60s by President Johnson to help children who are underprivileged and living in poverty be prepared for school. And one of the things they say that in order to be prepared for school, it's not just academics that you need. You need to be physically healthy enough to go to school. You need to be ready nutritionally. That's why we provide food. And you need to have your parents aware, as much as possible, of their role and how important they are in their child's education. So those are the things that we are charged with doing every year. Our program, again, is a little different in Fayette County because this school board and this school corporation, the school board is our grantee. Most Head Start programs are under a community action program, and they certainly operate a lot differently. I always say that being with the schools just sets the bar higher for our program. Not only do we have to meet the expectations of Head Start, but we also have to meet the expectations of the school corporation. So I do think it's a blessing for our program. Again, the school board's responsibility is just to make sure, really basically, that we run a good, on the cutting edge, I say, because we sure shift policies quickly with the federal government, but we need to be up to date and know what we're doing and provide the best possible program we can to get children ready for kindergarten. So the school corporation, just the school board has to be, they are in charge of our laws and regulations, they need to understand the philosophy, and especially the role of parents. I think you all do that. Already went and said on this board how important parents are to get their children ready for school. And then again, the school board is legally and fiscally accountable for our program. So our program, again, is governed not only by Fayette County Schools' policies but also by federal Head Start policies. And again, those shift quickly, and especially in the last three years, they shift often. We do have a shared governance between the school board and what our policy council is. And again, our policy council is mandated. They meet once a month. It has to be comprised of 51% by parents, Head Start parents, and then community members. So that is our policy council. They are charged with approving program policies, responsibilities. Also, Head Start personnel, anything that does, that is involved in Head Start personnel has to go through that council. Again, because of sequestration last year, we have changed our program just a little bit, that locally, we serve, our service area is Fayette County. We do have six classrooms at four sites, two at East View, one at Fayette Central, and two at Grandview, one at Magic Moments. Another difference between our Head Start and a lot of the other Head Starts, because we're part of this school corporation, is that our teachers have to be certified and licensed in early childhood, and out of six teachers, we have four with masters in early childhood, which really does bump up, I think, the quality of our program. Again, with sequestration, we have cut our funding. Now we serve 154 children. We do have a waiting list always, and we partner with CFRs to serve an additional, usually about 30, 35 kids with special needs in our program as well. One thing I brought for you tonight that wasn't included in what I sent to you, just, and I thought that might be of interest to you, just, are exactly what the federal law says, that the school board or our governing board has to do, that they are what they are responsible for, and just even to the point that Head Start also kind of not dictates, but says that our governing board has to be responsible, not only to our Head Start program but to Fayette County Schools. So all major financial expenditures, the operating budget of the school corporation, the financial audit, and any changes that need to be made there. And we have, you have to help us establish procedures and criteria to recruit and select children, and we will be doing that in just a second. Develop procedures for some of the policy council members, and again, that's another part of this presentation. Any funding applications we have, and just monitor progress in carrying out the fiscal provisions and any corrective items. And if you kind of remember back in June, we did have one corrective item, and the school board did approve that for us, is how we measure income from the school corporation. That that was one thing that they wanted us to change, and that you approved that in June. We'll move on then to Head Start Policy Council bylaws. And again, if you look at that write-up, just the bylaws, again, are pretty true to what most organizations' bylaws are. They name the name and purpose of the council, membership, how that's made up, officers who is responsible for that, and when our meetings held, any committees and voting guidelines. And those have to be reviewed annually and approved by both policy council and the school board. And the only recommended change from our committee that studied that this year is just to update the dates in the document, just to make it current. So change alternate dates just to update that document and make it current. Were the only changes that we had in that policy for our policy council. Head Start Integrated Service Plans, this committee, I think maybe two years ago approved those. And we did change those a little bit, but again, we have to operate by Head Start performance standards. The Head Start Integrated Service Plans are just our local design on those performance standards, how our program meets those performance standards. And they talk about things like classrooms, monitoring, mental health services, nutrition, facilities, Ursay, or how we bring children into our program, planning, assessment. They're pretty broad, but they do give us a guideline on how we operate our program. And again, we looked at those over the summer, and there were only just a few changes that we would recommend at this time, and specifically, it was to make, again, current dates in that document, to make, bring it up to speed. There are a few minor text corrections. Our proofreader wasn't just right on it the first time we produced that. And then the major change really was just updating that non-federal share policy that you approved in June, that we now have to use use allowance to claim income from the school corporation on all the space and equipment that you let us use. So that was the major change, but everything else was just pretty minor, just current dates and minor text corrections were in that. We also didn't change any reference from SASE to Harmony, since that's our new system. And I think pretty much that was all that was left in that document. And the last thing then, just priority guidelines. And again, we go over this every year, but priority guidelines are how we get children in our program, what we have to do to get children in our program. And the federal guidelines say we have to serve the neediest kids first. That's a challenge. We have a lot of needy kids. But in order to do that, we've come up with priority guidelines that establishes priority points for certain things that might go on in a child's life. The child with the highest priority points are the first into our program. And some of those, if you look in the second paragraph there, are, number one, do they meet our income guidelines? And you do have to live at the poverty level to meet our income guidelines. Homeless or foster care children? Homeless children get an automatic 10 points, and we do have homeless children in our community. Foster care gets an automatic three points, because again, that's such a high at-risk factor. If they're eligible for kindergarten next year, we also give them three points because we want to serve those children first. They are going to go to school first, and we need to get them in quickly. If they're eligible for Medicaid, food stamps, TANA, if we have an agency that refers them like Child Protection, they will get a point for that. If they have a family member who receives SSI, and again, that's an immediate family member, somebody that lives in their household. And if they have been, if they've had a sibling in Head Start, would they get a point for that? Because again, we consider that an at-risk factor. And one thing that we also do with that sibling is if they have had a parent who is a Head Start child, and we are in our 20th year, and we do have parents who are in Head Start as children, so. And we can take any other risk factors into consideration, but those are always assigned by our family service coordinators, because they know our children best when they come into the program. Our waiting list is also maintained on that priority point basis, because we do have a pretty mobile enrollment. Our kids move a lot when the rent comes due, and so that is also based on those priority points. And we do have to replace a child within 30 days. If one exits for whatever reason, we have to have another one within 30 days. And we usually accomplish that within a week, because we have such, unfortunately, healthy waiting list. So again, the only recommended changes in the priority guidelines this year were just date changes to make the document current, that we still felt like the priority points were exactly what we needed to look at when we consider a child to enroll in. That was a quick math book. Are there any questions?
Lori did mention the number of students that we served, and she was here last spring and talked to us about the impact sequestration had on the program. Lori, I shared in their background some national statistics, and the only one that I can remember right off the top of my head is nationwide, we're serving 57,000 fewer children, fewer contact hours, fewer employees. And so sequestration has had a significant impact on our young population across the United States, and that's unfortunate.
It absolutely has. And again, I think we're lucky in this county that we only had to cut eight, but then when you look at that waiting list, that seems like a small victory. It's not a large one. Thank you.
Lori, thank you very much for your report.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept Lori's report?
Mr. President, I move to accept the report.
Okay. Two seconds. Okay. Do I hear any discussion or any questions? Okay. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Okay. Now we're moving into the discussion items, and I think we have some budget reports. Jane?
Thank you, Mr. Virchitt. I'll make all comments related to the budget. This is a public hearing. Then at the end, if there are questions by the board or members of the audience related to this, I'll be happy to address those. But I'll speak about each one of the funds, hopefully briefly, but share some history and what the current budget also. So this evening's process is to hold the hearings on the budgets, the capital projects plans, and the bus replacement plans. These budgets and plans will be presented at the October 8th meeting for your official action on them. The budgets were published as required by law on August 21st and August 28th. The net assessed valuation for 2012 P13 was a little over $683 million. However, in developing the budget, I stuck with a net assessed valuation of about $650 million. That was the assessed valuation of 2010 P11. If you recall, we're, I mentioned several times before, that we're always advised to estimate our budgets and our rates high. They're always reviewed with the DLGF at the end of the year, after we have our official assessed valuation, when we know what our accounts are going to be, and adjustments are made at that time. But if you don't advertise high enough, you will not get what you ask for. So you'll get the lesser of what you ask for, what the levy would generate based on the AV. The general fund, here's where we're going to take a little trip down memory lane. Our enrollment continues to decline. Kindergarteners count as half. So when you look at our past history, where we were on August 29th of this year versus where we were on that September Magic Count Day last year, we're doing 115 students this year. Between 1112 school year and 1213, we lost 66 students. 1011 to 1112, we lost 74 students. From 910 to 1011, we lost 35 students. I was hoping our decline would be about to stable off, but it's actually an increase. So over the last four years, we've lost 290 students at $6,000 apiece, which is what the new funding formula calls for for Fayette County. That's an awful lot of money, $1.7 million in our decline in enrollment over the last four years that we will not see. This Friday's the official count day, so maybe we've had some come back from vacation after Labor Day, I don't know, but that'll be the official count day. And then the special ed count day is December 1st. The state is moving to two count days that drive our funding. For the past two years, they've done count days in September, with that to be the one to drive all of our tuition support funding. And then one in February for information only. Now, each one of those will determine our funding for the school's fiscal year. The September count will determine our funding from July 1 through December 31. The February count will determine our funding January through June. They will pay us on an estimated basis, and then after those count dates, account numbers are confirmed, they'll retroactively, they'll correct for the retroactive application of that. So last year, between September and February, I think we lost in the neighborhood of 50 students. So that two, the two count days will impact us on a negative basis. It will reduce the funding that we used to see for a full year, so. Some, some good news that we've talked about is, um, we've, we've seen significant changes in our staffing over the last two summers with retirements and transitioning into new positions. And that has significantly helped us, about 1.6 million dollars in savings between people at the top of the scale with people lower on the scale. We've been able to combine and create some split positions within our custodial ranks. So, um, we have experienced some savings to help offset those shortages in revenues that we've experienced. And we'll continue to look at those opportunities through attrition as they present themselves. Moving on to the debt service fund, we currently have five bond issues outstanding. The CMS remodeling, which will pay off in 2026, we refinanced that in 2011 and transferred the savings of 622,000 into the rainy day fund. We have the multi-school corporation, which that last payment for those bonds will be in December of 2014. We will not need a full year's levy for the final year. The QSCAB of 2009, which will retire in 2020. The new QZAB of 2013, which it will roll onto our debt service levy as the multi-school is rolling off. So there's only a portion built in for 2014. And then the QZAB of 20, 2001, this debt obligation is fully funded already. You'll see that fund identified on the fund report that you get. So it has no impact on the debt service levy because we've already put the money away to pay for that down the road. Our, our last payment is actually next year. Additionally, in 2010, we received a technology loan through the state common school loan program. That annual obligation is about $13,000. We have, um, that debt retiring by June 30th of this year. We did apply for another school technology loan and have just been notified that we received that loan. The base amount of that loan is based on our ADM times a factor, which was going to be about $75,000. We asked for additional monies because of our wireless need throughout our elementary schools and our middle school and the lack, lack of potential for E-rate priority to funding to complete those projects. We were awarded $147,000. These are low interest loans from the state common school fund. They range at an interest rate of between 1 and 4%. I have contacted the straight state treasurer's office to find out what the rate is for sure. Our past couple of loans have been at 1%, so I'm hoping that's still the case. In addition to the debt ser, debt service fund, in addition to these bonds and, um, the loans, we have bond administration fees. We have textbook claim for the free and reduced lunch students that are not fully funded by the state. In 2013, we had a one-time capital projects loan. And in 2013 previously, we had the legal settlement. That will not be in the 2014 budget. So as you look at the changes of our debt, items rolling on and items rolling off, we, we will be in a very comparable place, probably even saving some money. But the textbook loan did go up. That common school loan's going to go up, but they'll be offset by the things that are rolling off. The pension debt, this fund was established in 2004 to cover some of our retirement obligations. The bond issue retires in 2019. New for 2013 was an allowance to, for the levy neutrality component that was required on a graduated scale. So for 2014, we will need to neutralize with other funds, um, half of the pension debt obligation, which is about $223,000 a year. So we will need to make levy reductions in either capital projects, transportation, or bus replac, placement for, for about $112,000. The capital projects fund, the finance committee members met with each of the principals or directors and Mr. Floyd to discuss the needs within each of the buildings, to work to develop a capital projects plan, which is included in your budget materials that were given to you at the last meeting. The capital projects carries a rate cap. So as assessed valuation goes up, we can collect more money. If the assessed valuation goes down, we'll collect less money. So we frequently have significant changes to make in that depending on the, um, where the actual net assessed valuation comes in. The circuit breaker impact for 2013, we have levied $360,000 that we'll not collect on the debt service. We have received that information, and I'll share a little bit more later in the director of finance comments, the impact to each one of the funds. In your, in your packet, there is a five-year plan. However, the mandatory plan required for the budgeting purposes is a three-year plan. We do a five-year to try and get some things on our radar, plan for their replacement, be thinking a little further out than what the state requires us to do. These plans are revisited annually and updated with new needs and expectations. The transportation fund was allowed a 2.6% increase. The state annually establishes the percentage of increase and notifies us of that. It cannot exceed 6%. In the previous years, that increase has been between 2.8 and 2.9%. So it's slightly less than what we've received in the past. The bus replacement fund, two years ago, they developed a formula for the bus replacement fund where they take 1/12 of your fleet every year, times the average price statewide of the bus that year, and said, "We're, we're going to allow you to levy money 1/12 every year to replace your buses." Well, most places don't have their buses on a replacement of 1/12. They might have two buses this year and eight buses another year. So we this year need to levy more money than buses we need to replace, to hold in the bank for saving for two years from now when we have a significant amount of buses to replace. Their, their logic and their change to this, um, formula escapes me. I believe the reason they did it were because school corporations were adding more buses than they really needed to the bus replacement plan to have a way to transfer money to the rainy day fund. So instead of smacking the hands of those individuals, we're all penalized with this new formula and, um, have no choice. It's not based on when you need them, it's based on that maximum levy. So that is what we are doing also. Again, this year, the rainy day fund, I've established a budget and, and shared that with you in our budget workshop of 1.4 million dollars. 700,000 for salaries and benefits should we need it, and 700,000 for capital projects, which will be our go-to place for circuit breaker impact. Should we not be able to make changes within the current capital projects plan, we'd be able to shift some of those expenses over to the rainy day fund. Rainy day has to be appropriated, so by doing it as part of the regular budgeting process, we do not have to have, um, additional appropriations. We don't have to advertise, which creates additional costs. We just do it as a part of our annual budgeting process. At the October board meeting, um, you will be presented a resolution of appropriations and tax rates for 2014, a resolution to adopt the 2014 to 2016 capital projects plan, a resolution to adopt the 2014 to 2025 bus replacement plan, the tax neutrality resolution for the pension debt, and a tax levy resolution that gives myself and Dr. Hodges the authority to make changes in the budget as needed with DLGF at the end of the year when they actually work our budget. So at this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions from board members or the public. Is anybody, is anybody awake?
You did such a fine job.
Where's my calculator, my best friend?
Does anyone in the audience have a question or comment? Then we will officially close the public hearing part of this. Board, do you have any questions or discussion at this time? All right, well, this is the discussion item. So the action will actually be taken then at what our next board meeting?
October.
October, yeah, right.
See, he wasn't listening to me, was he?
I did, I heard every word you said. All right, with that, we'll move on then to our summer school report. And I believe, I've lost my paper already, uh, who's going to start with that? Dr. Riki?
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Brought some friends with me this evening to make sure we, we can answer any questions you might have about the summer school. The documents that you received in the docket are, the first couple of pages are, are from the state, and they kind of explain what it is you can do with summer school. And there's different categories of subject areas. Category one typically has been reimbursed by the state at 100%, 105%, which doesn't cover all of our benefits necessarily, but, um, it, uh, it's a, pretty much a no-brainer. That's something we really want to take advantage of every year. It is our, our elementary, if we stay with reading and mathematics and for grades one, two, and three. And then it's for, um, high school, anything that was relating to graduating, um, getting your diploma. Category two, this is the one thing I credit Fayette County was really sticking with, and that's where, um, that would be often used for your middle school math and language arts, um, or it can be used for the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade if, if need be. And, uh, many schools across the state have given up on middle school because the chances of getting any funding were very, very low. But that's come into our favor in the fact that, and principals don't get into the funding, so this is why I'm covering this little part of it right now. But last year, we got very fortunate in that we were, um, claiming category one and category two, realizing we may not see much of category two, but because so few in the state claimed it, we actually got reimbursed for category two as well, which put us in a, in a very nice light and encouraged us to continue doing that. So, um, what I would like to do is start with Randy, Mr. Judd, um, with the high school. Now, you've got, you've got the stats, you've got the numbers, the courses, et cetera. What I wanted them to give you is a little bit of the inside story. And we did a few changes in our high school summer school program, trying to meet some different needs. So I'm going to let Randy touch up on that a little bit.
Well, last summer, we did make some changes, and, uh, I think some of the changes scared students off. Our numbers were down quite a bit. And what we did is typically, in the past, we've had six weeks of summer school, and our classes were two and a half hours. So a lot of students would take two, two and a half hour classes for six weeks. This past summer, we changed it. We went to two sessions of summer school. Each were three-week sessions. And we started school around 7:45, and, and the first session, we had students that were riding the buses, and that's why we started at 7:45. Went to 12:30, and in that time, and it was a long, long time to be in class because you had one class for three weeks, and it was a little bit less than five hours. But you would be in class for maybe 45 minutes, and you'd go get your free breakfast. Every student got free breakfast. You'd go back to class for a while, um, maybe take a, a short break between breakfast and lunch, then you would take your free lunch. Every student got free lunch, and then you would go back to class and be dismissed at 12:30. It proved to be very successful for those who, who did try it. We surveyed the kids to see how they liked it, and I would like to share some of the results from that. 73% of the students said that the three-week sessions were not too short to learn effectively. 59% of the students said that the teachers did not need to change anything. That's better approval rating than President Obama right now. Most students, at least 75% of them, feel that CHS should stay with the same format for next summer. That was a surprising thing to me. I thought a lot of them were saying, "No, it was, it was too long for class, don't do it again." But three-fourths of them say, "Yeah, we'll do it again." And 30% of the students felt that the five-hour sessions were too long. So that means 70% of them were, were highly satisfied with it. We had, I'm not sure you have the statistics, but 91.4% of the students who signed up for summer school got credit. If you go to the other end, the ones that did not receive credit, right at 4% of those were no-shows or withdrawals, which means they, they didn't receive an app. They just either signed up and maybe came for one day or two days, or they, they just said, "I, I'm not going to do this," and officially withdrew. So we, we had some good success. I'm not sure what we'll do next summer. I'm not sure you're aware, but we will be having summer school at CMS because of the work going on to high school. That may change the way summer school looks. I don't know that it has to, but we are in the process right now of brainstorming and making a list of things that we need to take care of so that we can have an efficient summer school with our new host, CMS. Do you have any questions for me at high school? Janie prepared that for me. No questions.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Randy. One thing that's different at the high school is there are students taking courses that are not remedial. I mean, they're, they're maybe government classes, could be history class. They're, they're really for credit courses. There are some remedial courses in algebra, et cetera, for the end-of-course assessments in English or, um, mathematics past that state assessment. But it, there, it's something that within the other two levels of summer school, they are a remedial, um, framework. And so that you have to keep that in mind. We'd like to see the high school grow in summer school because it offers students an opportunity during the school year then to pick up some additional coursework with early college, it could come into play. But we have to grow that idea and, um, market that. Um, and I think we've got a good, a start of a good, um, idea so that they don't have to go to school, so, school all summer, just half the summer, and then they can take their vacation. So we're glad with that.
Just to touch on the rigor, uh, you know, you give these surveys and you give the kids a chance to say, "Well, what would you change?" Or "What didn't you like? Here's some of the things they didn't like." Too much writing. We need better food. We need longer breaks. So it wasn't like, uh, we need more interesting subjects, or we need more fun activities. It was, you know, you gave us too much writing. Our assignments were too hard, things like that. So it was, it was unsuccessful.
Thanks, Randy. And Beth or Tony, I'm not sure, I think Tony's going to share some, um, additional. You've got some middle school data there, but he's since done some analysis on success rates, and I thought that would be interesting to share.
We did. Also, I wanted to point out that whenever we, we brought our kids in, we did a pre-assessment using ARQD. And, uh, then at the end of the school, summer school session, we did a post-assessment. And we had, uh, we had double-digit gains in a percent on, uh, how, how much the kids improved. So we had, uh, we had about 66 kids that attended middle school, summer school. We had 47th grade and, and 26th eighth graders. And, uh, it ran from, uh, June 3rd to June 28th. Much like Randy said, it's kind of a modified schedule. The kids come in at 8 o'clock, we give them the free breakfast. Uh, we, we work them in the classroom for a little bit on, um, math and language arts, focusing on, um, algebraic functions or, and literary analysis or reading comprehension for about an hour. And then we'll get them on a computer, give them a break, get them on a computer, and then we'll, uh, give them a 20-minute break down in the cafeteria, time to relax. And then we'll hit them again for another couple hours using the, using a different approach with a different subject. The results of the, of the, as I was telling you, the, the pre and the post showed tremendous, tremendous growth. The results of the, as I was telling you, the pre and the post showed tremendous growth, and we felt like it was a tremendous success with our kids this year. The numbers were very similar to last year. I think a couple years ago, we may have been about 85, 90. So they've come down, two years ago, they come down, and then they sustained for the year, but overall, I think they did a great job. I want to thank our teachers that participated, Sandy Alish, Pam Herman, Donald Litten, Emily Whitaker, those four teachers. Also, Nina Munson, I want to thank her for the, making the meals, the breakfasts, free breakfast, and the free lunch. And Jane Oakley, we want to make sure we give a glad handout to her because she made sure that our kids got to school and then got home safely. So overall, I felt like it was, and Beth and Trent and I feel like it was a great success this year. Do you have any questions?
So I would think that most of those students are doing remedial work, is that right?
That's correct, that's correct. There were, there were five students that did not attend summer school, two eighth grade that were retained to eighth grade, and then there were three that were retained to seventh grade. The two that were retained to eighth grade moved out of county, and the three that were seventh grade are retained to seventh grade this year. And due to, and we did home visits, several of them, to try and get them to come in, and they wouldn't come in.
And another disadvantage, we didn't have I-Step back, and they were able to use I-Step failing rates as that ticket to get them to come to summer school, but that, we worked around it. We've had enough data to get them in, but it wasn't quite as easy to sell parents.
For students that did not meet promotion requirements, and if they met the requirements of passing I-Step, they would have been exempt from summer school, but we didn't have the data at the time.
Just curious, why would a student want to fail, being held back a whole year, when they could move forward in, what was it, three weeks, four weeks?
Four weeks, four weeks, from 8:00 AM to noon.
So what were their excuses?
It was environmental. I think we had one young man whose both parents were arrested, and he was basically on his own, living with an aunt, or an elderly grandparent, so I contribute that to most of it. Thank you.
And then Mia McCrary is going to share a little about the elementary program that we had at Frazee this summer.
Good evening, Cabinet and Board. I really loved being the summer school principal. Wonderful teachers, and you would have thought it was the regular contracted school year from everything that I got to observe from them. And once you get summer school going, they pretty much take over, and you see anchor charts everywhere, and great instruction, research-based, and I was very, very excited to see that all summer. Elementary summer school was held from June 3rd to 28th at Frazee Elementary, from 8:00 to 12:00 each day. Summer school is provided to children in grades one through six. All students were served breakfast and lunch each day. Students were selected for summer school participation based on academic need as determined by various assessments. First graders who scored the bottom 20 percent of their grade level in NWA, ELA, and math sets were targeted. Those students' reading levels and results from the observational survey were also considered. Second graders who fell in tiers one and two on the Acuity Predictive C in reading and math were assigned to summer school. I-Read III assessment was one criterion for summer school selection at third grade. Third graders who did not pass I-Read III were assigned to summer school unless a conference committee determined otherwise. Tiers one and two of Acuity Predictive Form C was the other criteria used for selection. Third graders who did not pass reading and math were also included in summer school. Like third grade, grades four through six also targeted students who fell into tiers one and two on the Acuity Predictive Form C in reading and math. Fourteen teachers and three assistants were hired to provide instruction to students. To monitor progress, pre- and post-tests were developed and administered at the beginning and end of summer school. Prior to the beginning of summer school, these assessments for grades two through six were developed based on corporation-wide data from the Acuity Predictive Assessments. The five weakest standards, standard indicators for reading and math each grade level were targeted on the pre- and post-test. First-grade teachers used skills checklist for reading and math based on NWA data. Data from the pre-assessment was utilized to guide instruction. The instructional day included 90 minutes of reading instruction, one hour of writing, and one hour of math each day. The balanced literacy framework was utilized for reading and writing instruction. All students received daily small group instruction based on vocabulary, comprehension of literary and informational texts. One classroom provided mild intervention instruction for third graders needing additional support. This instruction was provided by a special education teacher and an assistant. For math instruction, the Number Worlds Intervention Kits and Everyday Math Curriculum utilizing the Acuity C indicators were used at every grade level. Teachers also assigned Acuity resources for students to do on the computer. Students who did not pass the I-Read III assessment in March had to take the test again at the conclusion of summer school. This assessment was taken in the computer lab. Twenty-nine third graders took the I-Read III assessment on July 25th and 26th. Seventeen of those students had IEPs. Nine of the 29 passed the I-Read III summer test. Two-hundred-and-thirty-four children in grades one through six were expected to attend summer school this year. Parents of 33 students signed refusals, those were formerly called waivers, and one student moved out of the county at the beginning part of summer school. The overall summer school attendance rate was 83 percent. Do you have any questions? And I did also include the data, and I didn't go through that, but we had a month, and I saw a lot of wonderful instruction. Those students who did attend had some wonderful instruction each day. One thing I do want to do when we get the fall Acuity, I'd like to take the 33 students that, whose parents chose for them not to attend, to see where they were in comparison to those that did attend. So it is important, it does bridge a gap for our students, keeps them going, keeps them reading, keeps them doing wonderful activities in reading, writing, and math, and I have to say that that's important for our students in this county. Any questions?
What's an IEP?
It's individual educational plan for our special ed students
Okay.
that we have to strictly follow by law. Anyone else?
Thanks, Mia.
You'd like to make sure.
That includes reports.
Thank you for that report, everyone that was involved. All right, do we have any public comments from anyone? Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board at this time. Seeing none, we move on then to our report items. The superintendent's discussion group reports, are there any? Seeing none, principals' directors' reports. Ms. Ely.
Good evening, President Burchett, members of the board, Dr. Hodges, and Cabinet. I will be brief, I just have two announcements to share with you this evening. First, I thank you for approving the donation that was on the agenda tonight, and that's my first comment I wish to share with you. Mr. Beadle, our welding instructor, like several other instructors at the Career Center, has built partnerships in the community with various companies that help our programs a lot, not just in donations, but also field trips, hiring our co-op students, as Mr. Burchett knows, and coming in and speaking, doing mock interviews, the list goes on. But Mr. Beadle in welding, Mr. Richardson in diesel, Mr. Ergang in auto body collision, Mr. Beaver in precision machining, and the other Mr. Beaver in auto mechanics. Those five teachers really work well with their boards and their contacts. That particular donation this evening was scrap steel. Mr. Beadle goes to Rushfield to pick that up about three or four times a year, and that provides all our steel for our welding program, so it really helps on the budget, to say the least. And they don't really want it back, we sell it for scrap, helps pay for the kids to go to contests, so I want to applaud those instructors for the hard work they do for their donations, and thank you for approving those when they come before you each month. The second item, we're initiating a marketing blitz this year and kicking it off with our open house. You'll receive invitations, but we welcome all community members, the board as well, come and visit. It's October 17th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and we'll have a lot of activities at the school that evening. In addition to that, our committee's developed a one-page flyer insert that will be in the News Examiner at the end of September or the 1st of October to banner our career pathways and the different programs that we offer at the Career Center. We're doing a lot of other things with that committee, but that's kicking off our school year, so we appreciate your support, and thank you very much. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to ask them and answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Judd. Okay, anyone else? Directors, okay. Director of Personnel.
Thanks again, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of items. One, we have not concluded all of our hiring, at least, I think. Forty-one teachers are new to our school corporation this year, and had an opportunity over the past week and a half, not quite finished, but had a chance to observe all of five of those teachers in action on short, five-to-seven minute drop buys, and can say that I was really impressed with what I've seen, so hats off to our principals. I know we worked pretty hard this summer along with our teaching teams to make some great selections to provide greater instructional opportunities for our students, so hats off to principals and teachers who collaborated in selecting some really good people. We are going to support those teachers, obviously, it's very, very important, so a couple of things are happening here very soon. One, next week is our new teacher workshops. These require eight modules over the two-year period, professional development, and next week, our very beginning teachers, first-year teachers, will be involved in classroom management, and our secondary, second-year teachers will be involved in informational text and comprehension workshops next week. And finally, our mentors and mentees will be meeting with me on the 24th for a very brief meeting about setting the stage for what needs to happen with that program, whether you're year one or year two. It's a two-year program outlined by the state, and certain requirements have to be met, so we'll be working on those requirements and giving everybody the ease about what to look for, so. And just finally, I need a couple of signatures after the meeting tonight for a contract, so I'll approach you after the meeting. And that will be it tonight, Mr. Burchett, thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just have a few brief items this time. First, I'm pleased to report that our appeal for priority two, E-Rate funding for the wireless at Maplewood has been approved. If you recall, we filed for an extension for completion of that project, which was granted. We then filed our first claim for reimbursement, and they rejected it, saying they gave us an extension on time to do the project, but not an extension to claim reimbursement. Well, it's reimbursement. So anyhow, we've jumped through several hoops, and they have now approved our appeal, so technology will be continuing on with Bell Tech Logix for the completion and the installation at Maplewood, and it will be fully funded, and we were given an extension to complete that project and to file for payment through September 2014. So we'll have wireless at Maplewood. The QZAB is taking care of wireless at the high school. And I briefly mentioned the School Technology Advancement Loan, we were just awarded, for $147,000. That's going to take care of wireless in our remaining elementaries and our middle school. So we will be moved into the wireless world by June of 2014. That's when we have to file our claims for the school technology loan. One last item, our Circuit Breaker Impact. We just received the information related to that from the county auditor for 2012 P-13. The combined Circuit Breaker Impact to all funds is $990,000 that we have levied, that we will not collect. The largest part being Capital Projects Fund at $362,000, and transportation being right behind that at $283,000. This is the last year that all of the funds will share in the Circuit Breaker Impact. Next year, none of the debt service funds will be impacted by Circuit Breaker, but our portion of Circuit Breaker will remain the same and will be shared with Capital Projects, Transportation, and Bus Replacement, so we can expect the impact to those three funds to go up significantly next year. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good, thank you much. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just wanted to let the board know, we've now concluded all of our open houses, back-to-school nights, whatever they cater, and I think most of the cabinet made it to all of them, or nearly all of them, and I just want to tip my hat to the teachers and the principals for the great start. Buildings look great, the custodial job, our custodians did a great job getting them prepared again, and it's just impressive, it's just very impressive, and I don't want to take that for granted, because I've seen chaos happen at the beginning of school years before. So this is very, very good news, and teachers are working extremely hard, but doing good work. The other thing I wanted to share with you is, in that same light, is we, last week, had first grade, kindergarten, and second grade work collaboratively across the district in half-day, and second grade took a full day, working on aligning our curriculum, our instruction, and the assessments that we're doing, and so that we're doing, keeping up with the common core, and making sure everything is aligning, and we have Benchmark Literacy, our new reading program, and that takes a little time to learn, and we had some powerful conversations, and days very well spent, so I appreciate the support that you provide in allowing us to do that. And next week, the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade will each get a half-day to do that same type of work, so that all third graders are working at the same time collectively, hearing the same thing, discussing, and coming up with the same ideas, so those things are going on last weekend and next week for the first quarter, and then we're going to repeat that each quarter to continue along with that growth, because it's a lot of collaboration that they need to do, and it takes time to get that all done, so, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hodges?
First, I want to commend you for your continued support of summer school. You've heard some success stories and how important it is to the overall education of what we provide for our students, and as was shared, many corporations have had to cut back on their summer school because of financial constraints, and I want to commend Janie and the Finance Committee for sometimes a hard-line stance we've had to take on some things, but you know, our goal all along has been to protect programs for kids, and we want to do that for as long as we can, and I think to this point, we've done a very good job with that. We did begin to get some results back from I-Step. We're in the process of trying to sort through that. I will tell you that from what I've looked at, I'm not in total agreement with some of the comments that are coming from the state, that there was no impact. We've seen a couple instances where we think there are, at least some questions to be raised about why performance is where it is at in just a couple grade levels, but we're still working with that. We've got an elementary principals' meeting, I think, this Thursday, and we'll explore that a little bit more. And lastly, the ISBA conference is coming up this fall. You have an opportunity to send someone to the delegate assembly, which I think is an important thing to do. I can't appoint that person, I think the board president can, but I would suggest that you appoint Mr. Hilton to the delegate assembly if he's willing to do that, and I think he's served in that capacity before, but if you could kind of give me some guidance on that, as Cindy registers, we can file that, so there'll be a nice packet, thick packet for Mr. Pope to review and...
Memorize, right?
Pardon?
And memorize it?
And memorize it, and there'll be a test in October when you come back to share with all of us.
For the board.
For the board. That's all I have, sir.
Board members, do you have anything for the good of the cause?
Yeah, Mr. President, having been president of the Ag Advisory Committee, I think I'm on Tinder, is that, anyway, they did some splitting of assignments, which I'm not aware of. I gave 15 days to a new person, so I'd like to see a breakdown either verbally or So, I'd like to see a breakdown, either verbally or in writing, how those jobs got shifted.
We didn't shift days. What we've done is created sponsorships and I think, as we've talked about before, with vocational agriculture, it's difficult to know where classroom instruction stops and FFA activities begin. And the way the contract has been structured, we really give no recognition to the FFA portion. It's all days as a teacher. And so, what we're doing is talking about shifting the allocation of money dedicated to the vocational agriculture program, but recognizing what they do FFA-wise. And I think as we've talked before, many of the activities, as I understand that, you'll have a full instructional deck and then they'll go do soil judging or animals, cattle, whatever activities.
Livestock.
Livestock, thank you very much. As I said, I'm from Lake County. But in all seriousness, there really was no designation and no recognition of that time. What we're saying is that let's look at the classroom time, but then recognize the time outside of the classroom and recognize that as an FFA activity. Mr. Nabi has said for two or three years that he would like to see an adjustment in his contract so that the other person could receive some recognition for the work that they've done, rather than mess with the days. In negotiations, we've talked about, let's create a club sponsorship piece that utilizes those dollars and I think really do a better job of recognizing the work that they're actually doing. Now, what you approved tonight with the contract piece is subject to negotiations. If that doesn't go well and that's rejected by the union, we can't reach an agreement, then we'll have some different discussion as to what to do with those days. The days tonight establishes a pool of money that we can then use to recognize FFA activities.
I just like to see those jobs spelled out. Who's ever in charge of FFA and who's in charge of judging and all those things? I think they could provide that.
We will ask them to do that under the guidance of Mr. Judd.
He's not foreign, though.
I'm not from Lake County either.
Anyone else from the board? Well, I do. I'm grandpa and I want you to know it. I don't have a brag book, but my wife does. But I do have a couple of pictures if you're interested. And I know that Dr. Rick is also grandma, so congratulations.
Labor Day experience, yes.
Yes. Even this delivery made the news media.
It did.
So, I don't, it was in your Friday letter, but yeah, okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.